Like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled meeting of the Zion City Council of March 2. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
She's got to be unmuted.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fireson?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. On three, one, two, three.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner McDowell, would you lead us in prayer this evening?
Sure. I'd like to do that by reading from one of the Psalms. This Psalm is known as one of the Psalms of Ascent, and I don't know if you can see my background, but this background are the mountains leading up to Jerusalem from the Jordan River Valley. And ancient Israelis would sing, chant, or recite these Psalms as they walked this dangerous path up to the holy city of Jerusalem. This is Psalm 128. Blessed are all who fear the Lord, who walk in his ways. You will eat the fruit of your labor; blessing and prosperity will be yours. May the Lord bless you from Zion all the days of your life. May you see the prosperity of Jerusalem. May you live to see your children's children; peace be upon you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Commissioner. Item number four, Agenda Changes. Are there any agenda changes by any of the Commissioners? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number five, Citizen Comments. Just to refresh, our visitors on Citizen's comments, agenda item comments shall be made during the City Council meeting under the Citizen's Comments Agenda heading only, not when the agenda item is taken up for consideration by the City Council. Prior to speaking, the individual shall state their name and municipality of residence. For the record, such comments by any one person shall not exceed three minutes. Citizens shall not be able to yield unused time to other speakers. The Chief of Police shall serve as timekeeper during Citizen's Comments. Our first speaker, Citizen's Comments, Crystal McNeely. Crystal McNeely?
Yes, I was just unmuted. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I was trying to get my technology on together. Okay, time's starting now. Today I had a conversation with an older woman from the city of Zion. We discussed the circumstances that lead us here tonight. She said that I could not fight City Hall, and I promptly quoted former President Barack Obama with, "Yes, we can." To fight means to put forth a determined effort, just as this council was fighting us, putting forth a six-year determined effort for cannabis. I represent a body of people that stand and are putting forth a determined effort for our children, for equity. The city of Zion has proven that you all prefer profits over people, that you all are choosing cannabis over kids, but tonight I want to make a final plea. You claim five issues with our proposed space, but the true issue here is you all lack creativity. You fail to see alternatives or remedies to help us. This council has expected us to submit to your tactics and accept your treatment as normal. This council claims that there are questions of safety when reality, the space that we have, is the nicest space available in the city of Zion. I'd like the public to know that the space we have has its own entrance away from all traffic. It has close to $1 million in renovations. Our space is safer and nicer than all the other options readily available to us. This council claims safety issues when, in fact, this council, the planning committee, the commission, the fire marshal, and DCFS determined it's safe when our permit was granted. So to tell us what, please tell us what changed. Let's not act like ZLA hasn't done their due diligence. Let's remind the public of the pre-approvals and our comprehensive application. So again, we're talking about fighting, determined efforts. I have one question, why have you all acted as if your effort is more important than ours? You've arrogantly dealt with us with a conscious disregard of the impact that this council sits prepared to make this evening. Ms. Sonalito Bronson has reached out to us in an effort to bring this council and ZLA to a table to negotiate. This council refused because this council knew all along that you were prepared to take away our permit. Ms. Bronson said that the council would revoke this permit and simultaneously grant us another. Ms. Bronson said that this council would revoke, but we have heard nothing about this. This council wanted me to write a letter and sign it saying we relinquish our permit in exchange for a conversation to negotiate, but is that fair? I am an advocate, I am a leader. It is my responsibility to speak for those who cannot articulate for themselves. You all are leaders. It is also your job to speak for those you represent, and I'd like to remind you that children are counted as city residents. Yet you have failed to speak up for your children. You say you're speaking for the people, but if your plan has failed as it has, what are you prepared to do next? Why can't you be creative enough to advocate for your interests in cannabis and our kids? Instead, you have drawn a line in the sand and you've said it's your way or no way. You are prepared to kick us out of our space with no real plan for us to move forward. So to date, you failed in getting the cannabis, and now you're sitting prepared to fail our children. You all made the mistake, but why aren't you fighting to fix that? It is one thing to want money and cannabis and then make a mistake and fix it. It's another thing to make a mistake, disenfranchise the victims, and not make it right. That burden should not rest solely on the soldiers of us. It's because of you that we are here. So it will be no surprise to you that we are fighting as fervently as we are, that we are putting forth a determined effort that I have no plans of stopping. This speech is my final attempt to ask you to stand with us, to stand for our children, to make the right choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. William McNeely? Three minutes, please. You have to unmute yourself, Mr. McNeely.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Just so we'll understand that whoever the administrator is on Zoom has a mute override in place, so when you go to unmute yourself, you can't really do it on your own. But I'll be brief today. My name is William McNeely, and I just have just about three things to say. One is, any council member here that would approve of their kids or grandkids going to purchase recreational marijuana, I'd just love to just see you raise your hands. That's one. Two, I believe that the true remedy to crime is education and not jails. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, we have not, up to this point, been given any specific reasons why the city of Zion want to revoke ZLA's special use permit after they did their due diligence and issued it in the first place. Commissioner Ayerson only said it was many safety reasons, but up to this point, unless I'm a little slow, we have not been given any concrete reasons. I think this is wrong, I think it's an injustice, and I think it's downright shameful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kate Ebert?
Hi. Thank you. My name's Kate Elbert, E-L-B-E-R-T, and I live in Lyndonhurst. Dear City Council members, at the zoning and planning meeting held on February 4, Mr. Stack pointed out that several of the members of the public who voiced interest in this matter reside outside the city of Zion. Municipal codes and jurisdictions may be respecters of zip codes, but love of human beings and passion for justice are not. My house may not be in Zion, but my heart is. Zion is where my family is, family that's not united by DNA but rather by deep and abiding love. From Lewis to Elam, 33rd to 21st, I know these streets better than I know my own neighborhood. More importantly, I love the people who live here. It's not the city I love, it's the humans that make up the community whom I love. So if you're curious about why I care, that's why. Regardless of faith or worldview, I believe there's a general consensus that honesty, civility, and integrity are hallmarks of great leadership at any level. After four years of having to repeatedly explain to my daughters that bullying, lying, and harming people is not behavior that should earn anyone top office in a country, or any office for that matter, I found it particularly disheartening to have to explain how at a local level, where leaders have relationships with people in their community, some of the same things are happening. The city's unwillingness to engage in dialogue and answer straightforward questions has been frustrating. Noncompliance with sending requested information documents has been frustrating. Your avoidance in answering the looming question that has repeatedly been asked of you regarding your claim of new safety concerns is frustrating. But my gosh, the ability for this many people to deny accountability for a mistake and continue down the same road after all of this is exceedingly disappointing. The pursuit of power and evasion of accountability are extraordinarily strong temptations, while humility and honesty are the most honorable of character traits. Which do you choose, council members? I understand that the situation you find yourselves in is quite complicated. There are negative implications whichever way you vote. So my challenge to you is to do what's right rather than convenience. Make the difficult decision to sort out the mess, take responsibility, and get creative in devising a solution that is reasonable and equitable for ZLA and produces long-term benefits for a community that I desperately love. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Kathy Champagne? Kathy Champagne? If Kathy Champagne isn't available at this time, I believe we have some citizens' comments that were...
I'm here.
Okay, Kathy? We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Champagne, Zion, Illinois. I would like to apologize to the council for my lack of diligence regarding the zoning variance requested by Ms. McNeely. Had I investigated further, my initial votes would have been against both the tax amendment and the variance. I was too eager to help a young entrepreneur. That was an error. But when you make an error, you fix it rather than compound it with more mistakes. The reason to reject this variance request are safety. An industrial zone is not appropriate for children. The application does not comply with all the G1 special use requirements. The property appears to contain 18 acres, which was never intended. The proposed cannabis cultivation center creates a potential conflict being within 2,500 feet, in fact, the boundary's touch. The stop sign required as a condition for the variance has not been approved. If I can wrap my head around this, why can't all the alleged attorneys who have been arguing against it? While I realize this is a disappointment to Ms. McNeely, her response has been over-the-top and completely inappropriate. She, her family, and friends have made false equivalencies, indulged in name-calling, lied, and threatened Commissioners. The Knights Commandment has taken quite a beating. I shall address some of these accusations. Cannabis over kids, this is a false equivalency. As noted earlier, that location is not safe for kids. The city has prior commitments and potential legal conflict if they grant the variance. Further, the city has offered to work with Ms. McNeely to locate her daycare center in a more appropriate location. Equating the cannabis cultivation center to dope peddling, that's not true. The proposed cultivation center will be for the growth of medical marijuana, and it is not a dispensary. Marijuana is tightly regulated in this state. There will be no dope hitting the streets from that location. Ms. McNeely is being denied a location in the city, not true. She is being denied one particular location. ZLA is an educational institute. ZLA is a daycare center. The members took kickbacks, and there is proof, not true. Put up or shut up. Threats have been made to Commissioners who are up for reelection. $1 million. That's what I heard, $1 million. That was not put into that building by Ms. McNeely, and that came out in a public hearing several weeks ago. While the city has been working with Ms. McNeely to find a more suitable location, she has responded with scorched-earth tactics. Actions have consequences. After witnessing the lies, exaggerations, demands, threats, and bullying, I came to an easy conclusion that these are not the sort of adults I would want as role models for my children. I would never leave a child in their care. I will not be bullied, nor should you. Thank you.
Clerk Spooner, do we have some emails that have come in with commentary that you'd like to read?
Yes, I do. My name is Ms. Gwen. I'm coming to you as a daycare provider of 24 years in Lake County. I am really disappointed in your vote to revoke ZLA's permit. You should all know how important it is for kids to be educated in today's world. I'm ashamed that you chose drugs over education. We tell our kids how dangerous drugs are, but you'd rather support drugs over kids. From my understanding, you have been waiting for five years for these people to get a license to come to Zion, and they still don't have a license. These kids are here now and need your education now. You may be waiting another five years on this dispensary to get their act together, so while you're waiting, the kids are here now and can be getting their education. ZLA has a waiting list for kids to be in school now. How can you deny our future, the opportunity to get their education? In years to come, these kids may be sitting in your seats. You approved ZLA's permit, so give it to them. The dispensary can find another location when they get their license. Let these kids get their education, you got yours. You know that old saying, "You can't see the forest through the trees, well, you can't see the future through the weed." Whitney Houston sung it best, and I truly believe it. I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Get out of their way. Stand with ZLA, Ms. Gwen. I am a ZLA scholar. It is evident the city of Zion was not ready for this fight. Ms. Chrissy went through all the right channels, DCFS and Fire Marshal, to get approved for this permit. The million-dollar question is why was a permit issued in the first place if the city thought it was in an inappropriate location? Will you finally answer that? I have heard Commissioners say they feel offended, insulted, and attacked, and have put personal feelings in this. Yet, same as Chrissy is traumatized and overreacting because this black woman is a passionate about something you could care less about, and she is not to be disrespected or shut up. I speak for everyone standing with ZLA when I say, "Forget your feelings." The city has insulted us all with time wasted, the short or no answers, the lack of compassion and ability to throw rocks and hide their hand. The city knows, just like its residents, how a dispensary, a weed farm, or a farm in Zion, there is already nothing here. We want to bring revenue to the city, build recreational for the kids. Oh, like a school. But like the first meeting, Representatives of Zion are concerned with who is and who is not from Zion, standing with ZLA. Maybe that is why we can't get any answers, too worried about irrelevant things. It is sad to see the day money takes precedence over the education and future of our children. Yet it is just that, our children, the only ones suffering from this fight. We will not do it, and we will not give up. We will not give up on our children. We will not give up on Ms. Chrissy and ZLA. We will stand and back and stand by. #StandWithZLA, thank you, Shannon. Don Donowitz. I have two comments for the Village Meeting. The first comment is, why isn't the city helping ZLA find a different location in Zion and not helping them find a new location? Second, someone made a comment that the city was getting kickbacks for cannabis. Is this true? It is really disturbing to make that allegation, and if it is not true. If it is true, it's slanderous, if it's not true, it's slanderous and dangerous. Please be honest, is someone getting a kickback? Anonymous. Why would ZLA want to go into an industrial building in an industrial park? How is that fair for kids? It makes no sense to have a daycare center in an industrial site. Did DCFS approve this site? I want my daughter to be near open green space and not nuclear waste. Do they like this site because it's cheap? Did you see the cars in the background on their Zoom? This isn't about kids, this is about their cash. Don't kids deserve better? #KidsDeserveOpenParks, not industrial parks. #Don'tStandWithZLA. A mom that won't send her kids to school in an industrial park.
Got all the written comments that we had emailed to the city.
That's it.
We have several people raised hands, and we'll try to address this. Ashley Jensen, I believe her hand was raised first. And Ms. Jensen, if you can hear, we're trying to restrict the comments to three minutes.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. It is very disheartening to see how the city of Zion and its elected officials have chosen to handle this situation. It doesn't seem that the city is being changed in the reasoning for its decision to revoke this license. Many have asked a question why, and the city offers a blanket explanation of the fact that it is not safe without any specifics. If it is not safe now, why was it safe when the permit was issued? Did the city make a mistake? After attending a couple meetings, I was hoping the city would provide a thoughtful explanation, but the city has yet to have an open dialogue with the public about these questions. Although I'm not pervy to everything that has gone on, Crystal McNeely has been more than forthcoming about her side of the story. The city, on the other hand, seems to have been hiding something. I've not heard the city or any of the provided, or the officials, provide a thoughtful alternative to help the business that is ready to be a part of this community, a business that is ready to serve this community for the better, and especially a business for the betterment of children. Many citizens want to see more businesses that are geared towards children. And if you've heard Ms. McNeely's plans for ZLA, you would know this isn't just going to be a childcare facility, but it's going to change children's lives by giving them equitable education. Children in this community need a place like ZLA to thrive, and Zion has the opportunity to have it in its community. The city, nor its elected officials, have provided transparency in any of these meetings and have decided to dodge important questions. And it leaves me to question why? Why would the city of Zion not want to publicly address these questions? Why would the city not want to provide a helpful alternative in good faith? What does the city gain by leaving the public in the dark? These meetings have shined its light on what the city truly stands for, and it is not the community. If I've got it wrong, great, then please tell us, the public, what the city is going to do to make it right. Because from what I'm seeing, ZLA has special use permits, and now it's being revoked because it's no longer safe. But for some reason, it was safe months ago. ZLA has spent time and money to get this permit, and now the city is deciding to revoke it. ZLA has the support of the Zion community. Now the city of Zion needs to support ZLA and do the right thing. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Catrice Holmes has her hand up.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. One of the Commissioners stated that marijuana isn't dope. However, in the year program that is taught in elementary school, weed is considered a gateway drug, so it may not literally be dope, but it can lead to dope. You want to talk about bullying, insulting, and offending people, however, what the council has done thus far has been bullying, insulting, and offending us. We are all working citizens, and you have sat on this call, muted us, muted the chat, and wasted our time. We should send invoices. As far as Commissioner Fireson goes, he posted on Facebook, attempted to play a victim, and he has, in fact, been the bully. I wouldn't, you talk about you wouldn't go to ZLA. I wouldn't vote for these Commissioners, this mayor, or these elected officials like you. You all lack integrity, competence, class, and accountability. If DCFS gave them the green light, why are you guys constantly yelling "Safety"? All in all, you guys have failed. The city of Zion has failed the score, and I think you guys all should resign if you cannot make this whole situation right. Have a good night.
You too, thank you. Sheila has had her hand raised.
Yes, I'm Sheila. I'm calling to, you know, I don't understand what the problem is, and the first thing, I didn't like what the First Lady said. She was rude and nasty, she didn't have to say all that. That is, that was uncauseed for, that's not even cause for what she had to say. She won't bring her tears to ZLA. That don't make no sense. To me, Zoe stands for life. Life is a human being. Academy is a place to study and learn. Christie McNeely has altered it, she's a respectful person. She's not very disrespectful, and I didn't agree what she said. And like Proverbs 22:6 said, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it." She does all that for the community. For the First Lady to say what she said, that's why she didn't show her face. I feel like she was rude and nasty, and I wouldn't want her kid to come there if she won't feel like that. That's a safe place, and I don't feel like she had the door to stay there.
Thank you for your comment. Someone with Galaxy Edge has their hand raised.
How you doing this evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, city of Zion citizens? I want to say a couple of things, man. The most disheartening thing about all this is, y'all refuse to accept responsibility. Ms. Commissioner Holmes, let me say these few words to you, dear. How you got up on here, and you tried to make it seem as if Ms. McNeely has been the one that's been rude and not forthcoming about the things that's going on. It's so disheartening, dear. It's so disgusting, to say the least, that you would use this platform to do all of that. Commissioner Fireson, for the fact that you decided to take Facebook and take this to Facebook and play victim, that's also too disgusting. You guys are too grown to be all in y'all feelings, and we all fail to realize the most important thing here today, and that's our kids. The fact that y'all don't want to address it, the fact that y'all don't want to be honest about why y'all are revoking these special permits, it's disgusting. So yes, I want to put all of y'all on notice. My name is Ray I. Networks, and I'm going to be up there to make sure that each one of y'all that has voted against ZLA, we will show y'all at these polls that we are serious, we will not be bullied, and we will not be taken advantage of. Our kids come before any plant that you can grow, and it is disgusting that the city of Zion, all these streets is named after something in the Bible. Who are y'all? Y'all are so out of touch with the people in your community, it's disgusting and it's disheartening. And the fact that we have an African-American mayor, oh my God, bless his soul. You know, I just hope you guys do what's necessary to make this here right. Chrissy, baby, we with you, we standing with you. ZLA ain't going nowhere. Whether they want you to or don't, we standing with you, and we going to speak. Mr. McKinley, I'll see you at the polls, sir.
Look forward to it.
Yes, sir.
William Coleman?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we hear you just fine.
Okay, thank you, guys. My name is William Coleman, and I'm the Executive Director of North Chicago Think Tank. Our mission is to improve the quality of life for people not only in North Chicago but Waukegan and Zion. We just want to say, without a shadow of a doubt, that we are standing with the Zoe Life Academy. I know that in the past, we've been used to a sort of apathetic distance where you haven't seen many of the organizations in North Chicago stand together and come out for these issues, but I just want to say that that's changing, and we really want the leaders, the people in leadership position, to expect us to come out and request and demand transparency and demand accountability, and to ask for clear community development plans with rules and guidelines and ethics that we can understand and implement as we try to develop ways to support our community. So again, I just wanted to say that I wanted to stand clearly and assert... So again, we, I just wanted to say, um, that I wanted to stand clearly and assertively with, uh, the Zoe Life Academy. Please do right by them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, Tim McNeely has his hand raised.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Um, as far as like what Ms. Kathy Champagne said, I believe. Uh, the location and, um, that we're talking about, the inside and the outside of the entrance is really gorgeous, really solid, really great. And there's no building in Zion that is comparable to it besides like City Hall. Uh, the next thing I wanted to point out was that actions have consequences. That's what Ms. Kathy Champagne said. So I was wondering how the city will lead by example as far as how actions have consequences. Um, because it, and this whole process is very, uh, offensive because the permit is being revoked as if something changed on our side. As if Z L A applied for an adult daycare and then flipped the script and made it a child daycare. But nothing's changed on the Z L A side. It was a child daycare when we applied and got approved. It's a child daycare when you all tried to revoke it. And that's just offensive when we don't have transparency or, or anything forthcoming. So I would just love to see how Zion will make this right and how Zion will stand behind actions having consequences. I do believe everybody makes mistakes and I just want to see the leadership side of that from Zion and the leadership board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Ayesha Dwyer has her hand raised.
Good evening. Am I being heard?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted, hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to point out that, um, those were quite demeaning remarks by the commissioner. I believe her name was Holmes, if I'm mistaken, forgive me for that. And I hope that once the dust is all settled, that she'll have a chance to reevaluate those thoughts. However, um, going forward, it would be quite gross, um, for the city to basically ever mention, acknowledge, speak or utter the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. if you're not going to be true to what you put on paper. And that I really hope that this, your decision that you made, that you realized that this decision would definitely have an impact on your city. And I hope that everyone involved will have peace with that decision at the end of the day. I really appreciate what Crystal McNeely is doing for the city, what she's doing to try to impact the lives of children in your city. And to devalue what she's doing by, by calling it or naming it just as a regular daycare. When, what difference does that make at the end of the day? She's impacting lives and she's impacting the lives within your community. And so I just wanted to point that out. Going forward, let's just reevaluate our position and our stance as a community. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. We have Ace S H Shira has her hand raised.
Please don't take, my name is Jere and please don't take my scroll.
Thank you. We have, uh, Kathy McBride.
Good evening. Um, I am here and I'm speaking for the people. And shame on you commissioners, shame on you city of Zion. We are not going to be bullied in 2021. I am taking my notes. I am sharing all of you that are voting against this school. I am sharing all of the people that have lied on this young lady and her business. I am sharing all of your information so that the community will know not to vote for you again for these offices for the city of Zion. We stand with you, Z L A. We need, um, affordable childcare in Zion. I think that this is an awesome idea. It not only is a good idea for the kids, it also is a good idea for the parents. And we will see you at the polls. I'm making my list and yes, I'm checking my list two or three times to make sure that the people that put you in the offices that you are in right now and the tax money that comes off of our backs, that it is being spent fervorously, we will be checking you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You do the same. Thank you. Uh, Melanie McNeely.
Okay, all right, I think I'm muted now. Uh, thank you. I really just wanted to, um, touch on a couple of things I heard in opposition to, um, you know, or in, in, uh, support of revoking the special use permit. Uh, something about threats. And as far as I know, the only threats that have been made are threats for people to take back their votes, which is their constitutional right. That's not a, a threat that should be taken lightly. It's also not something that is, oh, I don't know, punishable. Um, that's everyone's right. So as an elected official to take that personally as if that is a threat against your actual personhood and then to back that up by trying to demean the fact that, uh, someone is providing childcare and like that's nothing. If you don't have an appreciation for early childhood development and what that means for your community, everyone absolutely should take their votes back. That's not a threat, that's a promise. They need to take their votes back. If you don't value education to the point where you understand that early childhood development is critical and it should be made a priority and you all need to get creative about making it a priority along with other small businesses in your city, absolutely the threat is to take the votes back. And we all need to stand by that and you all need to make this right. You need to stop pointing to these illegitimate so-called safety issues that were addressed by the Fire Marshal, addressed by D C F S, who is the governing body over childcare centers, not the city of Zion. You all need to make it right on up to your mistakes and make it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, David Nabel has his hand raised, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I just wanted to clarify something briefly for the record, uh, just so it reflects properly. When people saw Commissioner Jacqueline Holmes' name come up on there, she is using the city line in chambers for public comment for individuals, an audio line for individuals that want to make comments in chambers. Those are not the comments of Commissioner Holmes. Uh, and I want to make sure public record reflects the individuals that made those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator. Uh, Jamila, uh, Birdie Tweet has her hand raised.
Hi. Hi. So my name for the record is Jamila Jernigan. And I wanted to speak up because as a homeowner in the city of Zion who has, um, is currently sending my children across the state lines to a school in Wisconsin, I was excited to hear that there was be a, another school or a school in Zion for, um, children from the community and particularly children and the administrators would be black and brown as myself and my family. And I've been hearing a lot of conversations about, you know, why we want to remove or take back something that was rightfully granted to a business within the city limits is disheartening. And I just really wanted to come on and just remind people that in politics, a lot of times, you know, people are dishonest. They say things to get into office and they change their position. Um, or maybe they make their positions really known what they originally wanted to do anyway. I just really, we've been teaching in my home since we've been in pandemic, um, integrity. So I really just want to make sure that everyone takes some, um, self-examinations and really consider are, what, is what you're doing? How are you on the integrity meter? You know, are the decisions that you're making, are they honest? Are they just, you are held accountable, not just here, you know, on earth, but Christ sees all and knows all. So just making sure that everyone is being aware that we're watching, that the children are watching. You know, we don't want people to get, um, of age and they buy homes in other cities. We want to retain our, our future. We want the city of Zion to thrive. And seeing things like this and hearing things about the city that I moved to, that I did not grow up in, it's, it's really disheartening and I just really want everyone to, you know, be accountable, be aware, we are watching and please, 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 we're, you know, remember, we want to see your integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I see that Crystal McNeely and Kate, uh, Elba have, have their hands raised, but you're only allowed to comment once that city, uh, city comments. So you've had your three minutes and because there aren't any more hands raised, we're gonna move on to the agenda to item number six, which is the consent agenda. Uh, item number six is the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a special meeting held on February 12th, 2021 at 4:00 P. M. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on February 12th, 2021 at 4:03 P. M. And a regular meeting held on February 16th, 2021 at 7:00 P. M.
Is there a motion to approve the minute?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye.
Bills vouchers 136822 through 136924 drawn on Huntington National Bank. Total $475,706.72.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Second.
Uh, is there a second? Second. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson? Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number seven is discussion authorization and approval. And before we get to this, uh, section and make a motion, uh, for the items on the agenda, I, I do want to, to make some comments. First of all, I, I, I do want to thank the people here that came online to support Z L A and to talk about their issues and their concerns, concerns, and as well as to question our process. Uh, while we make mistakes, we're humans and we do make mistakes from time to time, just like you do. Uh, we use these comments to try to, uh, improve our process and prove our inner workings with the city. But I, I, I've got to tell you, with all of the comments, uh, I've been incredibly concerned and also disgusted by the comments made to our commissioners, members of our planning and zoning, uh, board throughout this entire process. Up to today, Ms. McNeely has controlled the narrative about these issues with her comments to the electronic print and different social media outlets. Unfortunately, she hasn't shared the entire story with everyone. While our character integrity and morals have been questioned by the support of Z L A, little has been done on your part to reflect your character and integrity as you've offered your insults and assassinations on our character. As I was reading the Bible this morning, it reminded me of a quote, a Bible passage, John 8:7. Let him who is without sin among you cast the first stone. And as we have gone through this process, what we have tried to do is to be honest upfront. And when you ask about the conversations that were had after I, there was a comment made at the last city council meeting that said, Mayor, why haven't you spoken up? So I'll address that right now. After the December 15th council meeting, uh, Ms. McNeely called me in my office. She was told to call me by someone in, in the community that knows my character and knows what I stand for and what this council stands for. And I told her, I just asked her, have patience during this process as we review this matter. That's all I asked. I said, we would resolve this issue. We did want her business in town, but the location that she selected was not suitable. While we were working in good faith to make this happen, to rectify this issue, what we had to deal with as a council and as part of public service, as part of being a public servant, the half-truths that worked, were told about what we weren't doing. While in essence, we were working the entire time behind the scenes of, Ms. McNeely, you didn't tell people that. Shame on you. We've been working with you to try to find an alternative location. Our staff at City Hall has been working tirelessly to find an alternative site that would be more suitable for the safety of your children that would be attending Z L A. It's really a shame that the aforementioned facts have never been mentioned in all of the media stories or social media platforms. So while people try to talk about officials, elected officials having integrity, it's a two-way street and so is having trust. Over the past four decades, it's been my experience that trying issues on public policy in the media rarely works. Whether it's local government, our nation's capital, trial courts or professional courts, because the entire story is rarely told. Our city council, since I've been on board, we encourage full and robust debate on all issues coming before this council. But as the chair of this council, all facts, not just one side, should be told in the same manner. So as I thought about this, I was reading Proverbs 3:29. Do not plan evil against your neighbor who dwells trustingly beside you. And we have worked with you, Ms. McNeely. We found you another location and yet you haven't given us a response about what you're interested in. So the question is the proposed land use compatible with the existing uses? No. Does this use being requested fit with how people are using the properties in the area? Absolutely not. So those are the questions that we had to ask as a council and we had to go back to our zoning committee as we were reviewing this matter. So we've been very forthright and forthcoming. We've been inundated with messages and calls and emails about what our plan is. And from that early conversation, Ms. McNeely, I had that conversation with you on the phone. If you didn't share that with your supporters and the people in your group, then shame on you. As far as the threats against elected officials, whether you're a voter or not, that's up to you. We serve the city. We have people that work with this city, that live in the city, that have integrity. And we do everything that we can to support the different venues in the city. And when I hear people talk about daycare, she's talked about Z L A. And what's been pointed out, Z L A is not gonna grow in that location. And that's been discussed with her, with our economic development, uh, the director. So to say that we don't care about children or that this is about cannabis over kids, it's totally inaccurate and self-serving. We have never said that we do not want your business here. We simply had a process to follow. We have sound, uh, found a site that is more suitable. Even after all of this, we will continue to work with you. So Ms. McNeely, it's up to you now to let us know if you're interested in the site that we found for you. If so, call our economic development director, Sonalita Bronson, as soon as possible and let her know if you intend to move forwards pursuing this particular site. If not, let us know so that our ta, our staff can return to what they're doing in bringing other businesses to our city. Item number seven. Item seven A, consider zoning docket 21Z-4 in ordinance requesting a text amendment to section 10292D of the Zion Municipal Code to delete childcare as a permitted use with an issuance of a special permit per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Staff has requested a text amendment to section 102.
Staff has requested a text amendment to section one oh two ninety two D of the Zion Municipal Code. Delete childcare as a permitted use with the issuance of a special use permit. Safety concerns have been raised regarding allowing childcare in industrial zoning district due to the businesses located within that district. Staff recommends we approve the text amendment, deleting childcare as a permitted use in the general industrial district. At the February fourth, twenty twenty one Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they recommended to deny the petitioner's petitioners' request. With a vote of three to two and one pass.
Uh, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the text amendment.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, is there discussion or questions? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number seven B, consider zoning docket twenty one Z dash five. An ordinance requesting to revoke a special use permit to operate a childcare facility for property located at twenty seven oh one Deborah Avenue, per Director Ianson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Due to the concerns allowing childcare in industrial zoning district. Staff is recommending that we approve docket twenty one Z five by revoking the special use permit for the purpose for the proposed daycare located at twenty seven oh one Deborah Avenue Zion. At the February twenty sixth, twenty twenty one Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they recommended to approve the petitioner's request. Revoked the special use permit by a vote of four to one.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number eight, departmental commentary. Director Ianson.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. With everything starting to thaw, just wanna remind everybody about their sump pumps uh to dump, to check them, make sure they're they're not pumping up against their house and they're discharged into their property. Not into the neighboring property or under public property. Thank you, Your Honor.
Uh, Director Roberts, are you on this evening? Director Roberts is not with us. Administrator Nable?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, I just wanted to. I just wanted to um let everyone know that we have started uh looking at water utility accounts that are past due and eligible for shut off. Um, while we are not currently doing shut offs, um we will be sending out accounts that are eligible. Uh, a shut off notice with a letter stating that we currently are not doing shut offs, but with to contact. Uh, if you need assistance to contact the township and their information will be on that letter. Uh, they will be able to try and assist you. Um, but I wanna make sure people have as much advanced time as possible to bring their accounts current. Before uh we get to the point where uh we might be doing shut offs. We're currently looking at giving everyone three months' notice before we would actually do shut offs, uh pay what you can towards those bills. Uh, obviously, that timeline will um be delayed based on whatever happens at the state level as far as. Uh, stays on evictions or or things of that nature. Um, but if you get a letter, just note that your comment is eligible. Don't freak out. Uh, you have some time, but we didn't want people to get too far behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Administrator Nable, the other thing too about uh shut off notices. Is that if people in our community are having financial issues, uh the United Way has a number or whatever kind of issues you might have. Uh, if you call two, one, one and need financial assistance or any other kind of assistance. United Way of Lake County can help direct you to the resources uh that can help you throughout the the rest of the pandemic. Uh, Chief Stre, I saw that he is in the house.
I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, just briefly, we still have a decent amount of carbon monoxide detectors to give away. Those have been difficult to give away. So if if residents would like one, stop by the station during business hours and we'll uh give you one. Also, just uh kind of a couple months away, but it's never too early to put it on your calendar. We'll be hosting a blood drive on May second in conjunction with Red Cross. A socially distanced blood drive, of course, uh in our station. Uh, more details to follow.
Okay, uh Chief Barton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanted to discuss a few things. We had recently, the department has made several arrests regarding some cases. One from last year and one recently that involved gun violence. Working with members of the community, we were able to successfully arrest these offenders and bring them to uh bring them custody. I just wanna encourage the community to continue to offer support when needed. We do need it and we do appreciate it. And uh in in these two instances where we had uh gun violence on our streets, we were able to make two solid arrests. And those those two persons are are in custody now, thanks to the cooperation of several of our community members.
Thank you, Chief Barton. Any Commissioners have uh any departmental comments that they would like to make?
Mayor, I've got uh two things I'd like to talk about. Uh, one is, I I wanna just direct this comment to uh Ms. McNeely. Um, and I know we've talked on the phone a couple of times and um I've directed you to uh an alternate location. I know it's disappointing that um this location in the industrial zone uh didn't work out for you. But uh one of the reasons we we did approve it immediately is because we really want you in Zion. And um I hope that this alternate location works out for you. Um, if it doesn't, uh I I actually have a couple other ideas of locations that might be suitable for you. So. Uh, I just want you to know that we really want you here in Zion and um I hope that we can find an alternate location for you that serves your needs and um those of your students. The second thing I wanna say is just um in the uh record amount of snow that we received this uh this February, two, two big. Snowstorms, one, I think it was uh twelve inches and the other is thirteen. I wanna commend our Public Works uh road crew and actually the water department was out uh plowing, um clearing the streets as quickly as possible. Uh, but with that amount of snow, uh you may have noticed if you, if your house uh is on an alleyway. That the uh the alleys were difficult to get to and uh needed to be cleared out um by us. Uh, which is really okay. Um, I guess I just would like all of our residents to know that um it is okay for you to take your snow blower out. And a clean, especially the area in front of your uh driveway or um or where you park your cars uh to clear that area. Um, I live in a neighborhood where our neighbors help each other and um sometimes we have to uh. Uh, it's it's kind of taking turns of who clears whose driveway and um and sidewalk. So I guess I would just like the residents to know that uh cleaning out the area in your alleyway with a shovel or with your snow blower or anywhere you can. Even down all the way to the end of the block is is really okay to do. And it's a service not only to yourself, to help you get out of your alleyway, but also to your neighbors. And when we do have snow of these amounts, it would be good for us all just to get out and help each other.
Excellent commentary. Uh, Commissioner McDowell, I was talking about that at one of the last council meetings about. Uh, citizens in my neighborhood that got out and shoveled the alleyways as well as the fire hydrants next to the uh that were adjacent to their homes. So that if there was an emergency, the the fire department could get in there. Any of our other commissioners have any uh words they'd like to say, departmental commentary?
I'll just echo the sentiments of uh Commissioner McDowell um to Ms. McNeely and to everyone else on the call. I know it is disappointing the way things turned out here tonight, but. We are very excited and hopeful that this uh alternate location will work. Um, I've toured it myself and. I believe that it would allow Z L A to grow into uh the 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 school that everyone sees it as and really be a benefit to Zion. So. Um, like I said, I hope once we move past this, we're able to go and uh take another look at the space and hopefully we're able to move forward and. Actually be better partners, better than what we've been over the last couple of months. So, thank you.
Mayor, I would like to say something. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear, Commissioner Holmes.
Um, I I would like to um echo uh Mc- Commissioner McDowell and Commissioner Fireson's comments as well. And um to the McNeely family, I do hope uh this matter can result be resolved in in a matter that uh does not continue prolong. Um, uh be prolonged. Um, you guys have not heard from me thus far. Um, I am the commissioner over building and property and I will say this, I do, um, I am of the feeling that um. It's the right decision to not have uh Z L A go into the Deborah Avenue location, but uh. Um, I I'm hoping that in the best interest of everybody, uh you guys will continue to work with the city to have this matter resolved.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, I would just, you know, number one, um, thank uh Commissioner McDowell and Commissioner Fireson and Commissioner Holmes for their comments. Uh, especially on the snow removal. Um, our Public Works crews, I mean, that's, they have done a stellar job this year. I think everybody can agree on that. Um, as regards the the uh Z L A, um. I have to to echo or second the mayor's comments. We do make mistakes. And we have tried in good faith to rectify the issue uh after the initial vote. And I think that for our part, that we've tried to find a new location. And I'm hopeful that one of those locations will be suitable. But the location at Deborah, um, taking another look at it and looking at it in more detail. I just did not see that it was acceptable for a daycare center, uh especially in your industrial uses like powder coating. Um, heavy machinery moving through the area, it just, it didn't make sense to put place. A daycare center in an industrial zone. Um, that's the whole purpose behind planning and zoning is that um. We have appropriate uses in appropriate areas. And uh, so hopefully we'll find another location within town if possible. Um, where the daycare center and future school might be able to go. Uh, so. And I'll just use, I'll close with my usual comments. Uh, if you're in public, please still wear a mask. Uh, if you're going shopping, shop local. Um, order out from our local restaurants. They need all the help they can get. And uh. Everyone have a good, good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Uh, my comments will be relatively brief. Uh, I just want us all to recognize the celebration of National Women's Month, which started yesterday in March. And I was struck by the comments as I was watching the Golden Globe the other night. And listening to Jane Fonda talk about inclusiveness. And she's been at the forefront uh in using her platform to help people in every situation and in disadvantaged situations. So as I started thinking about our city and our history, I thought about the vision of our founder. Uh, John Alexander Dowey and his vision of inclusiveness. I spoke to that issue when I attended the church service at CCC. Uh, celebrating their hundred and twenty fifth anniversary. And as we continue to make our fabric in this community strong, we've had threads in our community for many years. Uh, that have strengthened the fabric of our community. And I'd like to uh mention some of those women's name, while most of the time. Women that get mentioned are of national or international prominence. And again, there are women here uh throughout the course of my lifetime that have been tremendous role models for me, including my mother. Who passed away uh almost ten years ago. Uh, Sadie Watts, Ella Akins and Ella Colbert earned murder ransom. They were involved with forming the Futurama Club, which is now the Amadea Muslim Community Center. And they use that venue to bring black children in the community there in order to expand their minds. And as well as to get them involved in constructive activities that would help them lead a productive life. I'd I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about a couple of my high school teachers, Gil Richter, Camille Taylor, English teacher. Oh, who made such a difference in my life. There are also residents in our community that I've grown up with that have continued to model what we look for in the city of Zion in terms of people contributing. And helping our residents, Beverly Mall, Jackie Holmes, our commissioner, uh Commissioner McDowell's wife, Donna. And Carol Cap, who is no longer with us. Also Chris Clark, the former superintendent of the Zion one twenty six. So as we all celebrate the National Women's History Month. Uh, think about the women in your life that have made an impact on you in some way, shape or form. Reach out to them by phone call, FaceTime, text, whatever, and let them know how much you appreciate their efforts and what they've meant to your life. Uh, other departmental commentary, uh speaking of community involvement. That's about last week, uh we were able to make a deal with, involve with the Cancer Treatment Center of America and get vaccines. Uh, administer to Zion residents and residents of Lake County. Uh, my chats with the CEO of the Cancer Treatment Center, Pete Kevortian. They were able to open up a couple of extra days, Monday or Tuesday, that were being utilized for Zion residents. So March first, March second, March eighth and March ninth, I think we've only got nine spots left on March ninth. Uh, there will be about nine hundred and thirty six people that will be vaccinated. We are waiting at this moment for future dates to open up with the Cancer Treatment Center of America. Uh, that will allow our residents sixty five and older uh to be vas- vaccinated. And as that news comes out, uh I will continue to update our residents. Uh, we've had a tremendous amount of. Cooperation from our commissioners over the weekend that made calls and provided lists for us of seniors to call to to get signed up for their vaccination. So thank you. Thank you for the people in the community that also contributed so much and seeing that. In working so hard to have a site here in Zion instead of having to go out to the fairgrounds in Libertyville. Uh, that uh it it took a collaborative effort with us, uh the township also and also with uh the Cancer Treatment Center. Uh, that's all I have for right now. Again, we had the dates for March second, first and second and eighth and ninth. Looks like they're filled. We will be waiting to hear back from the Cancer Treatment Center uh about when future vaccines are available for our residents. Uh, if you're interested, please don't hesitate to call our number eight, four, seven, seven, four, six, four, zero, one, three. If you don't get an immediate response, know that we are tr- uh tracking the calls, making lists, and as soon as the vaccine is available, we will call you and schedule you. Item number nine, announcement on March sixteenth at six P M, there's a Zion Township Board meeting. At Zion, at seven P M, there's a Zion City Council meeting. It will be held uh via Zoom and we plan to continue to hold the city council meetings via Zoom until sometime in May. On April second, uh the city offices are closed for the holiday and on April sixth, there is a Zion City Council meeting. Item ten. Is uh.
He may have clicked.
I'll make it go in the closed session.
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Fisher?
I think some have already gone into closed session.
Yeah, I think it's. Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
David, you wanna provide instructions?
You will be getting an invite, Mayor and Commissioners, to join closed session. Um, everyone else, you're welcome to stay in the waiting room here. Uh, there will be no action taken after closed session other than adjournment of the meeting. Um, so uh if you are not here when we come out, have a good night, everyone.
Item number eleven, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Everybody have a good evening and thanks for your comments this evening.
All right, I'll see you later.